I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We have two public hearings this evening. So we will do the first one first, 2024-18, which is on the city's budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Darrell Polling. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, public hearing is open. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on 24-18? Hearing and seeing none, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Darrell Polling. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? 24-19 is the city, the Greensburg Community Schools budget for 2025. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin. Seconded by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there anyone here to speak on the Greensburg Community Schools 2025 budget? Hearing and seeing none, would take a motion to close the public hearing. Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Darrell Polling. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. It is Tuesday, September 10, 2024, the time being 6:30 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council's called order at this time. Please answer electronic devices. And would you call the roll?
Jamie Kane. Mark Harmon.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Rodney King.
Here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Darrell Polling.
Here.
Darrell Tressler.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from our August 13 meeting. If there were no edits, additions, or corrections, those will stand as presented. Okay. Our one item of old business is 24-12, which is the parking restrictions. Zach, do you want to give us an update on that, please?
Good evening, Council. Ordinance 2024-12, which was presented in June. And as we went through that process of that ordinance, we found a few more streets that we would like to add to the list or update on our list of no parking per our schedule, which that resolution will come later in the meeting. So current on the ordinance specific, 24-12 is the five streets that we originally named starting this discussion.
Are there any questions for Zach on that topic? It did come with favorable review from the traffic committee back when we looked at it. Is that fair, Kevin?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve 24-12 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Rodney.
I'll second.
Seconded by Darrell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Stermer, you've got 24-17, which is fees and fines for fire inspections.
Correct. Council, last month you heard a, good evening, by the way. Last month you heard a presentation by Inspector Campbell about instituting a fees and fines schedule for fire inspections as a way to incentivize correcting some fire violations. Since that meeting, we had one very public-facing business undergo some sprinkler issues in a public building. And through weeks of hard work and diligence, we were able to get the problem taken care of. But it did come down to almost an emergency order of shutdown to make that happen. So I think it reiterates the need to have a fees and fines schedule that we can help with that. The first draft of the ordinance should be in there, as well as a memo explaining it, as well as, I have Inspector Campbell here, who started this and spearheaded this effort. This ordinance was modeled after many of our other ordinances, and we might add the fees and fines schedule as an appendix to that. Council, I know the ordinance was sent to you. Did you have any?
No, I, well, yes, it was sent to me. Yes, I reviewed it. I didn't have any particular issues with it.
Okay.
It has an appeal proponent. It has, so it has a means and mechanism by which if an individual or business wants to challenge the validity of a violation or a fine fee or cost, there is a mechanism in there to do that. And yeah, I mean, I found the language of it to be very relatively straightforward. I've also, in talking this through and working through with the fire inspector, have seen his, at least an initial proposal of a fee and fine schedule, and found it to be appropriate and consistent with what I think would be, you know, something acceptable. So I had no issue with this ordinance language whatsoever.
Thank you.
I have one question on number seven.
Okay.
Which is that people or businesses that do not have firework permits.
Mm-hmm.
It's, if you read this, or maybe I've read it the way that's written, it would like, week one, they're, the Fourth of July holiday and so forth, and percentage of people that fireworks, they gotta come get a permit.
I would say that those permits would be for the, like, public displays. We have a couple of them here in town that...
That was the intent. Maybe we could add some verbiage about people or businesses for public displays or whatever.
Yeah, I agree, I can see that.
And they have to, that permit, Kevin, comes from the state, and then it's emailed to me, but we do have a few people who do try to skirt that system, that it's mainly complaint-based, is how we find out. I mean, we're not driving around, but you said that was seven, is that correct?
Yes.
What's the state's threshold for needing a permit?
So that, the state's threshold is 1.3G fireworks, which is basically regulated explosives, where the commercial fireworks that are sold over the counter, basically, are 1.4G, less powder, less, they're still just as dangerous and create just as much problem. But it's the amount of powder that's used, it's the size of the shelves that are used as well. Yeah, this, and we also utilize other communities, so it is a lot for people to come do that. We do some burning permits in the city as well, on an as-needed basis, but we can describe this out further as a public display. Some of it just gives us a little bit, you know, we get complaints of fireworks debris as well after fireworks, and people shooting it off in the road, and things like that. So there is a mechanism there, and that's for further, basically, another conversation on another day of how do we police that as well, and make sure people are cleaning up after themselves after fireworks. We had a fire in town this year on top of the jail due to someone setting off fireworks in the neighborhood. So that was done at an illegal time, and again, those times are posted by the state. We do not have any issue, we do not have any say in when it's legal or when it's illegal. We just have basically a fee and fine arm of that. And then, you know, most local citations aren't written for fireworks, there's just, it's a lot more work than what it actually comes out to be, so it's just a public education thing at that point. But we will specify that this is for, like, public shows, neighborhood shows, and displays, things like that.
I would also mention, even if they did a state permit, that comes to the chief, and he asks, okay, that state permit, once he checks everything over.
Any other questions or concerns with the ordinance as written, or the fees and fines schedule?
Make a motion to accept the ordinance, dash seventeen, with the amendment on number seven.
I think what I would do, if it's all right with the council, is my recommendation would be to pass it on first reading with instruction that amendment be made to that specific paragraph, so that prior to second reading, I'll circulate, you know, because there may be other places where similar tweaks may be necessary. I can certainly look through that, and work through that with the fire inspector and the chief. So if it's all right with the council, that would be my recommendation, is to pass on first reading, and then I will amend as part of the discussion.
Do you need to read word by word to me?
I don't think so. I think you just, you moved to amend, or you moved to pass on first reading.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Darrell, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the hard work on that, Ellen. Okay, Zach, you're back. 24-09 is now the, that's a resolution, 24-09, amendment to the parking schedule.
Correct. So the current parking schedule in the ordinance, we believe, was created through all the other ordinances and put together by American Legal. So resolution 2024-9 actually puts us in control of that schedule and updating that. So as new ordinances come, we still have to create ordinances for no parking areas, but when we do that, we will also update this schedule. So Mark, Cluster Kipper, and I went through the schedule multiple times over and over, reviewing each street to make sure that what was written in the ordinance is actually being reflected onto the schedule. I shared with you all our long list of edits for your reference to see how it came to the final product. You'll see in there, like, we removed a lot of the state, removed all the state roads that we technically have no jurisdiction over. We combined some of the streets as, over the years, ordinances get passed from block to block, and basically, it's the entire street by that point. We cleaned it up to where there's no verbiage for the cardinal directions in there, it's just street names, and you know which street section it's referencing because of the cross streets that are referenced in the schedule also. And just tried to make it easier to read and quickly understand.
Any questions for Zach on that? Zach or Mark on that?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve resolution 24-09, as it is a resolution and only requires one reading, so I want to be sure everybody's okay with that.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Okay, street naming for integrity apartments.
Yes, so integrity apartments has two private streets that they are wishing to be named. The main street connecting all the apartment buildings will be West Spruce Way, and then the street coming in from Veterans Way down to the apartments would be called North Progress Those names were given by the owner of the property, and I did not choose those names.
And then the addressing numbers, because when these were originally planned, it was supposed to connect to Wedgwood, but because it doesn't connect to Wedgwood, the need for a different name is what was driving that decision?
Correct. Yes, so without being actually connected to North Wedgwood, the city did not want to have it addressed off North Wedgwood, because any emergency calls that go out, if you're going out there, you're gonna assume that you can get there from North Wedgwood, which would not be the actual case. So we wanted to get the addresses changed to their street, and then they will be addressed off that West Spruce Way, which in theory will eventually connect to Moscow Road. And then all the apartments down through there will have the same street address tied to them.
Any other questions for Zach? Is there a motion to approve that street name?
So moved.
Names?
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Street names for Liberty Lakes.
So Liberty Lakes will be a public road. It will be part of the subdivision, and they are building it to the city's standards, so therefore, the city will take it over as a public street. Wasn't 100% sure on ordinance whether it requires to come before council, but since I was doing the other two, and it doesn't hurt anything, so they chose to name that street North Liberty Lakes Drive. And again, that came from the developer, not by me.
You're okay with that, with the addressing? Perfect. Any questions for Zach on that one? If not, take a motion to approve that as presented as well? Motion's made by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Darrell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council. Okay, Amy, you have a whole list.
I have a whole list, okay. Starting with a quick and fairly simple, understandable change to the current salary ordinance. Several years ago, we started doing the wellness incentive for both the police and fire. They've, they're kind of on a different schedule from one another. The police run it through the end of the fourth quarter, the fire have theirs done by the end of May or June. Right now, everybody is getting paid in January, once we have a new budget, and Chief Stermer and I talked about getting it to where he is actually paying his employees the year of, when they complete it, and so we are adding it to the salary ordinance only for this year, so that we can pay them, those who have passed it already, we can pay them this year for them passing it. Next year, it will go back to being just one time a year that they're getting paid for this wellness incentive.
But it'll always be through the fourth year, they pay?
For fire, and then police is still is through the end of the fourth quarter, so they are not paid until January. And Chief Stermer has enough in his current line item, from which he pays it, to finish those payments this year.
Any other questions for Amy? Take a motion to approve 24-16 on first reading?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Listen to your end.
Yeah.
We'll do that on the salary ordinance?
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Did you have another change that you were gonna bring next month?
Probably next year's.
Next year's, okay.
Yeah, you can suspend the rules on this.
Motion's been made by Kevin, suspend the rules on second reading. Sorry, second?
Second.
Seconded by Darrell. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. 24-16 is on second reading.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Okay, next. 2024-18, which is the 2025 city budget. I think the only thing is...
There are two versions in your folder. What is draft five is the, and as I explained in the email, is the literal response of the budget workshop. Draft seven has two changes, which is, Amy has, you wanna explain the airport funding instead of the additional appropriation first?
So when I brought you the additional appropriation for the airport a few months ago, explaining that in 2020, there were some reimbursements that were entered into the wrong fund. We did an additional appropriation, I told you that there were two more. Instead of doing another additional appropriation this year, I have added that total into their budget, and that will immediately go toward their Jackson County Bank payment in January. So that's the change in the airport, which one does that one on? Not improvement, the AVA, no, sorry, the airport authority. That's the change on that total.
Excuse me, Amy.
Yes, sir.
For being in the meeting with the airport board.
Yes.
Can you explain, and maybe I just missed something here, that that was put in the wrong account, it was still an airport account?
Yes, so they have three funds.
Needed to be moved within the airport.
Yes, they have three funds, and there's one for airport improvement, there's one in airport authority, and that's their operations, and then there's one for aviation fuels, or other gas sales and everything that are out there, so that has to be kept separate. When that money came back in, it really should have gone toward the airport improvement or whatever that's gonna go back to the Jackson County Bank, the loan that they have, and it was receded into their operations, so that's why we had to do what we had to do.
That's the way I understood it, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone that we did make an extra appropriation for that.
Right, no, this was, it was a correction of error, but the most lawful way to do it was the way we had to do it, which is the additional appropriation.
Thank you.
And then Darrell's point on the second item that is different in draft seven is the discussion that was had between Darrell, Polling, Kevin, and Jamie, Amy, myself, John Dooley, and Bill Ernstis from the airport board. At the last meeting at our budget workshop, there was a request to put that group together to meet with them. I don't know if you two wanna weigh in, but then the draft seven has the funds that were originally proposed at our budget workshop, that was requested to be taken out of the fund. Those were removed. After our meeting, I was asked to have it put back in as a proposal, so that's what the two differences between five and seven are.
Correct. With the caveat that 120 goes back in, 100% of it goes against the loan.
I think that was something, that was discussed, that the money being contributed would be for debt relief exclusively.
Yes.
If I could add something, I don't want to speak for fellow councilmen, but I believe we all agreed, we were disappointed that the city did, does have to do this, because we were told that the airport wouldn't be self-sustaining. And, but at the end of the day, city's on the hook, and we've gotta pay our bills, so just wanted to make that clear, too.
We're like that, if you could give us a lot of numbers, if that being as far as the Jackson County Bank was...
Yeah, make sure your light comes on. Yeah, just speak louder.
It's not working. I guess it is. You gave us a lot of numbers.
Yes.
Breaking down that loan, payments to that loan.
Yes.
You could fill that together in a spreadsheet for us.
Yes.
That we could all, that way everybody's got all the same information.
It's a good point.
And I just went over those numbers again today with our grant administrator from Butler, just so that he can reassure me that, yes, that is, those are the numbers that, and the money that is coming back in, that we should be expecting to come back in, so that was good to hear.
You did a lot of sleuthing on that.
Lot of time. Lot of time, yep.
I heard the word authority in there, does that change it to what we discussed?
It's, I think that's, no, no, absolutely not, no, that's just, I think that's just more of, it's more of a state budget, like Gateway is what we put this in, right? The online tool, and I think that's just what all airport operations is called, is airport authority, but that is, we're not changing anything here to make it an airport authority. That's what it's been titled for years in here.
Is there a motion, is there any other questions on that, or anything? Is there a motion to approve one of the presented drafts for probably best identification? Or some version of that?
So the latest version is seven, right?
Which includes the change to the funds that were misallocated, or, you know, put in the wrong account, and the reinserting of the amount discussed at the budget workshop from the same fund, with the restriction that they be exclusively used for debt relief.
I'll make the motion to group, draft seven, first reading.
Motion's been made for draft seven by Kevin.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Darrell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. 24-19.
Okay, this is for the Greensburg Community School 2025 budget. I cannot answer any questions on this, but if you have any questions here from the Greensburg Community School Corporation, if you do have any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our 2025 budget is very similar to our 2024 budget. We're basically increasing our salaries and benefits, utilities, just basic operating cost, less than 2%. We have a lot of laws and new rules every year we have to comply with based on what the state desires, so we're able to do that very similarly to 2024, so. Does anybody have any questions?
How would you view your year-end cash balances on a comparable basis?
We're actually probably are higher than we have been. We've received a lot of federal funding, that's helped. That's getting ready to come to an end pretty soon, so we're gonna have to look at our ADM and our property taxes pretty closely, but from 2025 to 2024, I'd say we're in better shape even.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Ms. Phillips?
Make a motion to pass the school budget?
Second.
Motion's been made by Darrell, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's one reading.
It is not, so they'll be back next morning.
So that was first reading? Yep. All right, 2024-20 is the, I'm sorry, the city salary, the ordinance for city employees, public safety, anything that was changed, for 2025, I'm sorry, anything that was changed is highlighted in yellow, with the exception of one mistake that we found this evening that will be changed before the second reading, and that is that police pension should be at 1,500 instead of the 1,000 that was marked, so that will be changed before the second reading.
Any questions on that? Take a motion to approve 20, 24-20 on first reading. Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yes, this is for, trying to type into this, it's hard, for elected officials, the salary ordinance for 2025 for elected officials. Again, anything in yellow is what was changed from last year.
So it states in there, from the workshop, it looks like it stayed the same as what was presented, and not the change that we had discussed.
Is that correct? In relation to mine or Amy?
Yes, yes.
Are you talking about the top line?
Yes.
That's the base, and so we had agreed in the workshop to leave the base alone and add the education stipend. So I did not, there is no change in my base between 24 and 25. The only change was in the education stipend. The only change was in the education stipend.
Did we discuss at the workshop that that would be done over a two-year period?
And that is, so that is 10% and not the full 15, what is recalculated.
Make sure that's clear, too.
Yep, yep.
So with what's ordinance, it's the base? Plus the stipends, that's correct?
Correct.
I just think that's a, a big step for one year, but I'll leave it up to my call.
I think the step's appropriate.
Does that mean you should get paid more, too, since you have a doctor?
I mean.
Does that mean you should get paid more, too, since you have a doctor?
Your question is very inappropriate.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just ask, that, it was just a question. I mean, we're giving out funds for degrees and, and doctorate degrees, you have one. I mean, that's, and that's great, that's fine, but, I mean, I think it's a very fair and legit question to ask.
You have the right to vote, same as I do.
Yeah, I know, I know. I didn't, you just kind of took it the wrong way, and I'm sorry if I came across that way. I was just asking a question.
How would you accept it?
Y'all know where I stand on this, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Rodney. Is there a second? We do have to pass a salary ordinance by a, motion's been second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
For Darrell and Vieta? Is that all on the noes? Okay.
Nay.
Nay, okay. So Darrell, Mark, and Vieta are noes. Darrell Tressler, Rodney, and Kevin are ayes. Is that correct? Okay.
In the event of a tie?
In the event of a tie, pursuant to, pull it up here.
Near code 36 dash 4 dash 6 dash 8, subsection B, provides that, this subsection applies only to third-class cities, which Greensburg is. The city executive shall preside at all meetings of the legislative body, but may vote only in order to break a tie. So the executive, the city executive, which is you, breaks ties.
Okay, I'll vote in the affirmative, and this can be considered again on second reading next month. 24 dash 21, I'm sorry, 24 dash 22.
This is the salary ordinance for the municipal water and wastewater. Again, everything in yellow is changes.
The one piece of that ordinance that is not highlighted that is a change is the same paragraph about the longevity that applies to all departments. So that was changed, but is the same language as in the other one. Any questions on 24 dash 22? Now I'll take a motion to approve 24 dash 22. Motion made by Kevin, second by Vieta. All those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Sarah, you have 24 dash 15, which is amendment to the UDO.
Yes, good evening. You received a copy of 2024 dash 15 in your packets. It's a couple of minor amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that was attached as Exhibit A. The first one is under B accessory structure standards, and this, these were two things that were not carried over from the old to the new UDO. So D was added as kept at one accessory structure building per parcel. And then the other one, under the parking surface, I've added gravel as an element that's not permitted as a parking service, surface, sorry, and all parking lots must have curving in place. Again, those, that's just carried over from the old ordinance that were missed, and carried over to the UDO. Is there any questions? Six oh.
Yeah, so favorable from the plan.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Question on it, though, first. Would there be any possibilities of this being a case-by-case study or a case-by-case on the gravel? If you have a business that is a heavy implement business that moves it within the city, somebody that's dealing in tractors or large, large trucks?
It's a BZA.
And, yeah.
There's an ordinance there.
Variance process.
And I certainly think you could also look at, if you ever actually wanted to amend the, the UDO on some level, you could certainly do that. I don't think that's the appropriate, I don't think this is the appropriate amendment mechanism, but if you wanted to propose a different ordinance that amended that specific paragraph, I think this is just fixing what is essentially inadvertent deletion in the transition from the old ordinance to the UDO. But I, I agree, there's variance.
If the BZA sees multiple instances of similar variance requests, at that point in time, it would, it would be diligent for the Plan Commission to review the ordinance and make a recommendation.
Yes, I agree. Full hearted.
Any comments?
There is a motion on the floor, it needs a second.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I think we can suspend on that one.
I believe you can, there's nothing, there's no finance fees or money associated with it.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Rodney. All those in favor of the suspension, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Rodney. All those in favor, on the second final reading of 24 dash 15, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thanks, Sarah. Okay, Mark, you've got an update on the trash truck.
Good evening, all. If you remember back to our budget workshop, we proposed replacement of a garbage truck that's, it's dead to its life. We have done some further investigation. We have went through the process of obtaining a quote that's through the source well, where the national organization takes bids from certain manufacturers across the country, and then all local governments can utilize that and meet the bidding requirements as necessary. We've settled on a 53,000-pound V W Western Star and a 20 cubic yard high compaction truck. I have a quote for 232,000 and some change. The Board of Works approved that tonight to go ahead and let them know, because we've got about a seven-month lead time to get this truck, what I assume at the first reading, you had no issues with that being in the budget next year. And I'd like permission to go ahead and place the order with the understanding you will adopt the budget with that in there. I did take an opportunity to review the year-end financial statement. We've worked hard to increase efficiency within that fund, so we have the cash on hand at the end of the year for the replacement of this truck. And at the end of the year, we'll have cash on hand for the replacement of the truck the following year and not have to make any kind of budget increases because we've got the cash reserves. I don't know if we need a motion, Krist. Because it's hard just gentleman's understanding or?
I will always defer to a motion to approve.
Motion to approve buying a trash truck.
Motion's been made by Mark, second by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you guys very much.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, sir.
I would come out on heavy trash, it seemed like there wasn't as much around.
Absolutely the smallest quantity we've ever had.
I kind of thought that didn't see a lot.
To tell you the extra amount, they haven't done all the numbers, I got the bills late, but we picked up the numbers, the total trash for the week wasn't a two-week collection, whereas the one in the spring is about a month collection on top of the normal weekly trash. So there's really hardly any volume to even justify the second one, and I'm probably going to come back to the Board of Works for the recommendation, we go to the single one, probably move it to the first of June or the second week of June, so that people have a chance for a little better weather and get everything together, because I just don't think we can justify the need of the second one. I'll get you some further numbers if you want.
Just curious, all right.
Okay, thank you.
It's one of the hottest topics of the year, it always seems, trick-or-treat hours are back around and already being requested. You have a memo from Kristen proposing that we do Thursday, October 31st from 5:00 to 8:00 in keeping with our other traditions. Any issues with those?
Sounds sweet to me.
Been waiting all year to say that. Okay, so we will, I don't think that needs to be a full-blown, cool, okay, we will work on that. As a reminder, this Saturday is the open house for the Street Department Fire Station. Hope that everyone can make it. It is open to anyone and everyone that would like to attend. The doors will open at 10:00. The Street Department will be at 11:00, the ceremony is at 11:00. Fire will be at 11:45. Doors will be open until about 1:30. Come on out, coffee and donuts and can take a tour, and our crews will happily show you around, they're very proud of it. And moves have been made, for the most part, and it, it is coming to a completion. There's still some items to touch out, but we hope that everyone can come out and join us for that.
Looks really, really good.
It does, we, we should be very proud.
Very proud.
As a community, so. And then as a further reminder, the next meeting in October is going to be shifted up to Wednesday, October 2nd. We will try to, there's not as many bills that come through here, so that is a little less impactful on Amy than for the Board of Works. Any questions on that? Give a quick update from the Board of Works. Julie came and talked about some lateral transfer work that's being done as a part of the handbook committee that Darrell Tressler sits on along with Jamie. And, yeah, and so talked about that a little bit. That won't take effect until 2025, as it is a part of the budget process as well. And a conditional offer of employment to two firefighters went out as well. We had an agree, we have a sort of an updated agreement with Duke Energy for the Washington Street project that was inadvertently left out of the agreement, but it doesn't really impact the project timeline. Mark talked about his trash truck and getting approval for that. The wastewater department is going to fix, remodel a lift station that has, you still have to enter into the lift station in order to access the pumps and manage it, so we're going to do one that's similar to our others, where the pumps will slide up out of the top, a lot safer. And then we also approved purchasing new lights for downtown that work with our new poles, so those will be here for the Christmas season. That's that. Mark, how about Main Street?
Market to meal was a huge success. They were excited to have been the first event in the new renovated alley, 1822. Main Street Greensburg is working towards being nationally accredited and will have a visit with Indiana Main Street and Main Street America in November. The Economic Vitality Committee is hosting a technical assistance workshop on October 21st from 10:00 to 12:00. Downtown business owners are invited to come and speak with local experts and ask questions about HR-related topics, grant programs, marketing, and general business practices. And then the ribbon cutting for the alley is?
Wednesday, next week.
Next week on Wednesday.
Yep, it's four o'clock. Anyone and everyone's welcome. Perfect. Kevin, anything else on plan?
We had two public hearings. One of them was the amendments to UDO, and the second one was a primary and secondary plan for Jeff Whitaker at 1530 West Veterans Way. Pretty smoothly, and then we got into the new business. Jeff's primary and secondary plan was approved, the six oh vote, and then, as we mentioned earlier, amendments to UDO coming with a positive recommendation, the six oh vote.
Perfect, thank you very much. Darrell Tressler of the Economic Development Corps.
Well, the more meeting is this Thursday, still no meetings, that's what I said.
Please, Rodney, 911?
We had a meeting about two weeks ago. We have an interim director, Leanne Dashill. She presided over the meeting. She provided an overview of, overview of the new hires who have filled the open positions that were available. She's asked the county council to release some of the 911 monies to meet organizational needs. Mr. Edward Ruder, representing ER Safety Services LLC, was introduced by Leanne. Mr. Ruder serves as a consultant, and his services were acquired to assist in the hiring of a new full-time director for 911. Discussion was held by those present, recognizing the traits and abilities that might be needed by a new director to service the head for the Cato County EMS.
From Plan Commission? No, no, that's probably not even. Vieta, solid waste?
They had their talks away this weekend, but I wasn't able to participate, so I'm going to touch base with Stefan.
I've not heard how it went either.
Very well attended, I can tell you. Yeah, I took some things out.
How long did you have to wait?
Probably a good 25, 30 minutes.
Redevelopment Commission?
We did not meet, meeting was canceled.
I think Water Board was canceled, I think everybody else. Okay, anything else? No, take a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks, everyone.